Good evening, welcome to the Monday, September 17th, West Fargo Commission Meeting. Please join me in a pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is to approve the Order of the Agenda for tonight's meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you Commissioner Simmons, is there a second please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded to accept the Order of the Agenda for the September 17th meeting, all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes from September 4th, they have been distributed to the commission, are there any additions, corrections, comments?
Make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner Simmons, been moved to approve the minutes as presented, is there a second please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jurteby, been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the September 4th meeting, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next order of business is building permits to review, they have been presented to you, are there any questions, additions?
And will we accept them?
And moved by Commissioner Olson that accept the building permits as presented, is there a second please?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jurteby, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next order of business is the consent agenda, there are items A through F.
What's the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you Commissioner Thorsted, is there a second please?
Second.
Commissioner Simmons, thank you for your second, been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented, all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Next order of business is our regular agenda, item number one is a public hearing and liquor license approval for Hooligans, Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening, President Dardis and Commissioners, today is a public hearing for Hooligans, they currently hold a liquor license along Cheyenne Street and 32nd within the strip mall and they want to move to a location that is within the same area but right along 32nd, it used to be the car dealership, and so though it is the same group that is going to be conducting business in the new location, we have to have a public hearing because the location they're moving to has never had a liquor license. It meets the requirements of the ordinance and therefore I have no objection to it other than if you hear some public comment that you would like to address.
Thank you Mrs. Fisk, any questions for Tina, any comments, the reports have been submitted to you for your review? All right, we'll close the regular agenda of the liquor license approval and we'll move into the public hearing, is there any public comment on the Hooligans liquor license approval? Is there any public comment on the Hooligans transfer of their liquor license to the new Is there any public comment on the Hooligans license renewal at the new location? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure on the license approval for Hooligans to move?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you Commissioner Thorsted, thank you Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded to approve the license relocation for Hooligans, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much. Regular agenda item number two is a public hearing and liquor license approval for McKenzie River Pub and Grill, Mrs. Fisk.
Yes, again McKenzie River Pub and Grill, you have their application address there, they're relocated right off of Veterans, they meet the qualifications for a liquor license and they've passed the background check, therefore I'm recommending approval for the liquor license for McKenzie River Pub and Grill.
Thank you Commissioners, any questions of Tina? All right, we'll close the regular agenda for the liquor license approval for McKenzie River Pub and move into the public hearing, is there any public comment regarding the liquor license approval for McKenzie River Pub and Grill? Is there any public comment for the liquor license approval for McKenzie River Pub and Grill? Is there any public comments on the liquor license approval for McKenzie River Pub and Grill? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed, going back to the regular agenda of the Commissioners' contemplation of their liquor license approval for the McKenzie River Pub and Grill, gentlemen?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you Commissioner Simmons, is there a second please? Commissioner Jurteby, it's been moved and seconded that the West Fargo City Commission approve the liquor license approval for McKenzie River Pub and Grill, all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Regular agenda item number three is the public hearing and the first reading on the rezoning of Southdale 2nd Edition, Mr. Silber.
Thank you Your Honor, Commissioners, I'm going to pull up an image here of the proposed project, the application here was received to accommodate redevelopment of a portion of the Cass County Housing Authority property located south of the high-rise at the corner of 7th Avenue and Cheyenne Street, currently here are one level buildings, they're zoned R2 for medium density multifamily development, the applicant here is seeking approval of a planned unit development to mix, to build a mix of higher density style buildings along with future medium density style buildings as well, density is proposed to increase but not at a very high degree, Phase 1 and Phase 2 would increase the units from 60 units to 84 units, it's not yet been provided for what Phase 3 would provide, the building type however would not be approved in our R2 medium density style development, so even though the density is probably not so much, it's more the building type that requires the PUD. The application first was reviewed in concept which included the entire site, that's now broken into three phases as I mentioned, Phase 1 and 2 are north of 9th Avenue West and are encompassed in what is Lot 1, Phase 3 is south of 9th Avenue West and would be encompassed in what is Lot 2, detailed development plans that you have before you today are only for Lot 1, future development would need to be reviewed as a PUD amendment if Lot 2 is later developed. Folds to vacate 9th Avenue West, remains on the plat, however the detailed development plans indicate that as a need yet, we need to clarify that within a potential agreement or amendment to the plat which could take place prior to a second reading or a final approval to avoid any confusion on what might be done with that road. The proposed building here includes facilities to support the project such as offices for the Housing Authority and community space, building is faced with a mix of higher end materials including brick and cement panels with a large amount of glass especially on the main floor which faces Cheyenne Street, the applicant here did a good job of working with their architect Fox Architecture and their subconsultant LHB to design buildings and a site that mixed well with the city's downtown, I believe they achieved some good results and worked with staff and as many stakeholders as they could to get to that. Staff report the planning commission discussed parking in detail, the PUD allows for opportunity to reduce parking requirements if it can be supported and justifiable, staff and the planning commission found the reduction to be justified through its research and similar projects that the applicant has done, and we also use Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual to determine what a typical demand is for parking and found that what they're providing is adequate. A letter which provides background on the Housing Authority property and the need for affordable housing in the community is provided by the Community Development Director, that's in your packets, and Larry could discuss that if you have any questions on that, the applicant here has provided a project schedule again that highlights Phase 1 and 2 starting off hopefully together, and Phase 3 to come at a later date. Planning Commission recently met on the detailed development plans and is providing their recommendation for approval with the conditions that are noted in the staff report. I'm available for any questions, the applicant is here as well, a public hearing is scheduled.
Any questions, Mr. Silber?
Just one question, Tim, do they have a transition plan with the existing residents there, you know, they're not going to be without a home are they for a period of time, I mean it's a nice looking project and I look forward to it being completed, but I certainly don't want those residents to be on the cold either.
Yeah, I could get clarified by the applicant during the public hearing if you wish, but they did address that at the planning commission, they're required to actually provide some, a place for them as they transition, they'll have to apply to come back in at the time when it's rebuilt, but they have a full intention of hoping to provide the same space for those same people, so, but in the meantime in the interim they're not just kicking them out and leaving them high and dry, they have to actually provide relocation for them, so.
Good, thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Thorsted, anyone else, any questions? Thank you Tim, we'll close the regular agenda for the first reading of the rezoning of Southdale 2nd Edition and move into the public hearing, is there any public comments with regarding the rezoning of Southdale 2nd Edition? Please state your name.
Mr. President, Commission members, for the record my name is Dan Mather, I am the CEO for Beyond Shelter Incorporated, North Dakota nonprofit affordable housing developer, and I'm here today with Blake Straylow, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Cass County, and together we're working on the redevelopment of the public housing units, and to address the question, there is a relocation plan, all tenants will receive a tenant protection voucher, so they currently have rental assistance, they'll get a voucher which takes rental assistance with them, and then they'll also be offered an opportunity to come back once the buildings are utilized, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
Sure. I think so, all right, looks good.
Thank you.
We're good, thank you very much. Is there any additional public comments?
I have some questions.
Please, Mr. Lenzmeyer.
Frank Lenzmeyer, and I'm a senior, the community space that's planned for this structure, is it planned for what, the first phase of it, will it handle second and third phase, will the people that will have to be moved out be able to come back, I've already heard that answered, and will the cost be similar or, I'm concerned if it might be prohibitive for existing tenants?
Please state your name.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Blake Straylow, I'm the Director of the Housing Authority of Cass County, to answer his questions, actually the people who will be going out will get the voucher, they will be paying pretty much exactly the same portion of their rent that they would if they were living in our public housing units, so there really isn't any difference in the amount of rent paid, as far as the community room space, actually the community room space is adequate for both Phase 1 and 2, we are actually putting some community room space into Phase 2 as well, just because it is a separate application, but there is plenty of space available for that, I'm not sure what the other questions are.
The cost of their rent is a direct proportion of what their household income is?
Right, the cost of the rent, actually it's going to be a little different type of a project than what we have now with the public housing units, but we are going to be project basing vouchers into that building, so with that their rent will be the same.
Mr. Lenzmeyer, to answer all your questions?
Thank you.
Yes sir.
Thank you.
Thank you Blake. Is there any other public comments regarding the approval of the rezoning of Southdale Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, move back to the first reading of the rezoning of the Southdale 2nd Edition, are there any additions, additional questions, Mr. Silber? Or Tim, do you have any additional comments?
We did have one phone call, it was generally positive, but they just had some comments on the general look of the site, I believe that those were sort of addressed, it was probably more of an interpretation of the pictures we sent, so.
I guess I do, Tim, is the front of that building on Cheyenne, now is that kind of, it's kind of hard to tell, yeah, where you're pointing exactly what that is going to look like, is that, obviously there's no patios, so probably none of that stuff.
The offices for the Cass County Housing Authority and kind of support staff for the property will be housed in this northwest elevation here, intended to kind of look as though it's kind of got an activated business sort of feel to it, like a mixed use project like we have had in downtown Cheyenne, that was their intention for that, and then the property is kind of bumped out a little bit to Cheyenne Street, not right on Cheyenne Street, there is a setback, but they wanted to kind of keep that, well, we kind of encouraged them to kind of keep that along with the same line of everything that's going north of there, they're not required to because this is not in the Cheyenne overlay district, but they wanted it to kind of feel like a gateway as you come into downtown as opposed to a traditional apartment style that would have a large open front courtyard, that courtyard's kind of pushed behind it.
That's just kind of what I'm concerned with, we have millions of dollars going downtown, so we want to make sure they fit in as best as we can.
Yeah, they did, if, I normally don't give an opinion on these things, but I think they did an outstanding job on trying to create a nice looking exterior that matches the downtown, so.
Good, thank you. So the surface area between the street and the building, is there green there?
Yeah, there's a little bit of green space and they planted some trees that you can see, or they're going to plant some trees, you can see, the, well I guess where the cars are parked, that's parallel parking on that side, there's still a boulevard, then a sidewalk and then more green space, but just not your typical, you know, 30 plus feet of green space, I think it's, I want to say about 10 to 15 feet, so.
Very good, any additional corrections for Mr. Silber?
I think, Mark, didn't you ask if there are going to be patios up on the, or balconies or something like that up on top, is that one of your questions?
I did ask that, but no, I don't think there are going to be.
I don't think there is either.
Right?
No, no balconies.
But there, all the entrances I'm assuming are going to be through that parking lot anyway, right?
There is an entrance here and it's just not a major focal entrance.
Every, yeah, it's not every individual one like it is now, is what I'm saying.
No, no.
Okay.
Actually, the main floor is actually parking, but they have windows in there to make it look as though it's sort of like a main level.
Oh, that's a parking lot.
Yeah, so similar to Harper Heights which we just reviewed for Mr. Toomey's project by, kind of by the town hall.
Anything additional? Thank you Mr. Silber, what is the pleasure of the commission?
Make a motion to put it on first reading.
Thank you Commissioner Thorsted, is there a second please?
A second.
Thank you Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded to put it on first reading on the rezoning of Southdale 2nd Edition, all those in favor signify by saying aye please.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next item on the business is item number four, and that's a public hearing for the property tax exemption for Cass County Housing Authority, Mr. Marshall.
Thank you Mr. President and Commissioner, I am handling the financing side of this project that Tim has just been talking about. So as Aspin's mentioned, there's two phases to this project, they, although they make a voluntary payment to the city of West Fargo, they need the city's, or the city's participation so that they can go out and seek tax credits from the state of North Dakota to sell on the open market to finance this project, so it's a little bit of creative financing. To back up, and I won't rehash all of the details that were just explained in the project previous, but the pilot's role here is specifically just for financing, the Cass County Housing Authority makes a voluntary payment every year to the city of West Fargo, and then what we have done is we've looked at their pro forma and we are allowing them to create a different voluntary payment structure under a pilot program, and the reason we're doing this is because when they sell their tax credits on the open market technically there will not be a nonprofit owner, it'll be a for-profit owner, so for that period of time we need to have this pilot in place. So what is that, what we're asking them to do is if they continue to meet their current market, which is what they, they're individuals that are at 50% of AMI, that's the low income seniors, they can then reduce their voluntary payment to $200 a unit per rent. Again, this is the existing property, or the property condition, again I'm not going to go through this as Tim has just covered it, the pilot will be for 15 years, here's the schedule, so the total pilot over the 15 years is $302,000, you know, so the estimated payments will still be $376,000 over the 15 years. This project has been in front of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, they recommend approval, and now it has also been in front of the schools, they recommend, or they are going to participate the full 15 years, it's also been in front of Cass County and they have voted to participate as well. With that, I'm available for any questions, comments, and this is a public hearing to open up as well.
Questions or comments to Matt? We'll close the regular portion of the meeting and we'll go into the public hearing, is there anyone else care to have any discussion on this? Sir.
Mr. President, Commissioners, once again Dan Mather, Beyond Shelter, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
What is the contribution to the city of West Fargo on a yearly basis?
On a yearly basis, the calculation based off full taxes, I would say probably maybe $30,000, $30,000 to $40,000 significant.
Thank you sir. Any additional questions for the gentleman?
No, I think this is a great project, the timing is right and everything seemed to be following in place, so I think it, hopefully this will go well and that'll add to amenities downtown and those people will be able to get back in, I know some of them are complaining now a little bit, but I think when it's done, they're able hopefully to move back in, like you say, I think they'll be much better off.
Is there a concerted effort with the vouchers that you issued to these people that they maintain their West Fargo residency with these vouchers?
Basically with the voucher they can, they can move wherever they want within the metropolitan area and are out of state, but we're working with other developers in the downtown area to hopefully keep some of them in the area and utilizing their vouchers in some new developments in downtown, and hopefully they'll want to come back because of the quality of the new product, and we're really excited about the project as well and from a time perspective, things seem to be lining up right, very well, but this is, you know, one of the major significant pieces for moving the project forward with our funding applications.
Could you restate your timeline for Phase 1 and 2?
Sure, basically the applications are due at the end of this month, mid-November is when we should hear if we were successful, and basically the block that we're talking about now are the 84 units, and if that's, if we're successful, the financing we would hope to be basically relocating the tenants in basically from, I would say March through June, doing demo in July, and hopefully putting some foundation and construction work on August, September, with completion a year later, so August, September of 2020, part two which we haven't talked about yet, we'll be bringing back probably this time next year.
Very good.
I'm assuming also those vouchers, probably when the projects are all done are going to come to an end at some point anyway, is there a certain timeframe we have for those vouchers?
With the vouchers, they'll be issued to the existing 60 tenants, they'll have that voucher, they can take it with them, and they will hold on to that voucher until they no longer qualify income way, income verification for the voucher, and then the project based vouchers that we placed in the units will either be that existing voucher or our new voucher, so the rental assistance will be with the tenant even if they move out and decide not to come back, they'll still have rental assistance, and for any tenants that come back, they'll also have rental assistance.
Okay. Additional questions? Thank you sir.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Are there any additional comments in the public hearing for a property tax exemption for Cass County Housing Authority? We'll close the public hearing and go back to the regular agenda, Commissioners, any additional questions of Matt, or your thoughts please?
Do you need some type of vote tonight, Mayor?
If you, excuse me, if you don't mind, I do have some additional comments that I forgot in my presentation, so I apologize.
Please do.
There have been three requests as this project has moved forward throughout the different boards that now review these, currently the Cass County Housing Authority mails a check directly to the city, the county has requested that the tax payment that is made directly to the city that will now go to the county and then filter through the different taxing entities like a normal project, currently they send a check rate to NIC, to the city of West Fargo, so they'd like to just sort of clean that portion of it up, the second request of the Economic Development Advisory Committee is that can we formalize an agreement for after the 15-year pilot when that comes off, that this payment continues in perpetuity, because again it defaults back to a voluntary payment, and so in the agreement that we prepare will have, you know, that this payment continues on an ongoing basis, and then the third thing that I just want to clarify is that this is for Phase 1 and 2, and I don't know if I did a good enough job explaining that, I just wanted it to be clear, doesn't change anything, just, and if not for Project 2 which is on the south side.
Thank you Matt. Any other questions for Matthew? Mrs. Fisk, I have a question of you, what is your opinion of the tax payment going directly to the county versus the city of West Fargo?
I don't see an issue, I concur with Matt on the way that the funds are to be handled for this situation.
Very good, thank you. What is the pleasure of the commission?
What type of?
You're looking for an actual item this evening? Vote on it?
They need approval or denial of it.
Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Commissioner Simmons, is there a second please?
I'll second.
Commissioner Olson, Commissioner Olson is seconded, been moved and seconded that we do a property tax exemption for the Cass County Housing Authority as detailed by Mr. Marshall, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next order of business is review the property tax dent for Cass County Housing Authority redevelopment, Mr. Marshall again.
Yeah, I apologize, same thing you guys just handled, I believe, approval or denial of this project.
Okay, so we're good?
Yep, you're good.
Moving on to item number seven. Number six, excuse me, I'll be okay, review the resolution of sponsorship for Housing Authority of the Cass County, property acquisition and letter of support for demolition, Mr. Wile.
Yes Your Honor, Members of the Commission, the, this is still part of the project for the Cass County Housing Authority, in their financing scenario they have approached the state of North Dakota, seeking funding from the Governor's Fund of the Community Development Block Grant, and in so doing, the initial approval was given by the Governor's Office, and that is pending support, a letter of support from the city of West Fargo, there's a second part of this where they're requesting also within the letter the approval of a demolition permit for demoing the old project, I'd be open for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wile?
Larry, this doesn't take any financial burden into our part. Larry, this doesn't take any financial burden into our apartment, I would think. This is just a request, helping them get approval. We don't have any financial responsibility.
No, the city has no obligation in that. There are some guidelines of sponsorship that the city has, which is akin to the project that we, projects that we have done with the Grace Garden Project, a community development block grant fund, so.
Any additional questions for Larry?
Just need an approval or anything like that?
Does the city have requirements or standard operating procedure with regard to demolition, with regarding to dust control and the types of the product, you know, the materials being removed and recycled and/or disposed of properly and all that? You know, is there, is there any, is there any issues with asbestos or anything like these in these old apartment buildings?
Before we take any of the materials near landfill, we're required to have, to have a environmental survey of the property and make sure there is no asbestos that's friable, that can actually be emitted to the air either from the flooring tiles to the piping and all that. That, all that has to be abated before it goes to our dirt landfill. Dust control, things like that, that's just part of the general environmental requirements for taking it down. So if you saw when they took down the VFW, they had the sprinklers going the whole time and just kept that to the minimum.
The environmental evaluation, is that the expense of the developer?
Yes, yes, it is. And with a lot of the costs of the recoverable costs from the concrete and things like that, usually, the contractor keeps that out and crushes that and reuses it. It's basically the leftovers that gets sent out to the dirt landfill.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of, any additional questions or anything of the resolution of sponsorship for the Housing Authority of Cass County Property Acquisition and Letter of Support for Demonstration? Demolition, excuse me?
Make a motion to approve the resolution and the letter of support.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorstedt, is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurteby. It's been moved and seconded for a resolution of sponsorship for the Housing Authority of Cass County Property Acquisition and a letter of support for demolition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Next order of business is the review of the Cheyenne Street Phase Three Cost Participation Agreement. Mr. Brenniger.
Mr. President, Commissioners, in front of you this evening is the North Dakota Department's Transportation CPM Agreement for Phase Three of Cheyenne Street construction. It's a basic agreement telling us what rules, regulations that follow for the design, how much money they're going to donate towards this through the federal aid program. This project for Phase Three is $4,916,910.76, which is interesting, they increased that last week by an additional $566,000 for excess funds. They picked our project, include that extra half million dollars too. So I think that's a credit to everything we're doing to the city that we're actually getting extra money that we weren't planning on to get ahead in the first place. So if you have any questions, I'm available. Otherwise, this is pretty much a standard agreement. We just accomplished here for the downtown grant here a couple of weeks ago.
You're looking for an actual item to?
Just to prove, prove executing the CPM agreement.
Great news, $566,000 additional revenues is a very, very, very positive thing for the city of West Fargo. You and all your team, congratulations.
Thank you.
Of course, the commission's going to take credit for it, but that's okay.
As they should, as they should.
All right. Is there any additional questions for Chris? Sharewood entertained a motion, please.
I move.
Been moved by Commissioner Olson that we enter into the agreement for the cost participation. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jurteby. Been moved and seconded. That Street Phase Three Cost Participation Agreement be executed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number eight, review the accelerated greenworks request for installation of custom green space. Pierre Freeman and Jody Callis. Thank you. Somebody coming up to talk to us? Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I was waiting. I'm assuming this is Jody. Go to Lake.
Hello, I am Jody Callis. At Pierre Freeman's request, we received a letter from him earlier this spring, I believe, requesting that we modify our boulevard. Currently, it is gravel, and we allow our employees to pull up to the city curb. So on your drawing, there's a dashed line and then a large green space there. That is currently the gravel area. It's, this lot is located at 636 10th Street in West Fargo. So that's on the, what would be the southeast corner of 7th Avenue North and 9th Street. So we are just west of the city of Fargo landfill in a little industrial area there. They do not have any city sidewalks or anything in that development planned. And you'll notice the other sheet that I gave you is our kitty corner boulevard across the street to the east. We had landscaped that in and used it as a demo area and tried to keep that looking nice for passersby and our business. It's a good presentation. We are, at some point this fall and winter, going to be presenting plans for a new office space on this empty lot. And as I said before, per Pierre's request, he has asked us to take the parking off of the right-of-way, which is that is about 25 feet there to that dashed line from the existing curb. So we were unsure how to move forward, but had asked for permission to put in a similar landscape with artificial turf instead of regular grass. And they recommended that we bring it in front of the commission for approval. And I believe Tim may be able to speak on this as well. I had been emailing back and forth with him. From a planning standpoint, it's my understanding that they have really no opinion of it other than we should look to the commission for approval and possibly some of the maintenance departments to make sure that we're not going to hinder any city functions in terms of snow removal or other maintenance and take responsibility for maintaining it, which we have and would continue to do. So I'm here if you have questions. And as I said before, we're looking for, I believe, approval so that we can get this completed this fall so that we can remove the gravel at Pierre's request.
Thank you, Jody. Any questions of Jody?
I just have, Jody, is this, it appears as if you were supposed to do this in 2017, and then it seems like we sent you a couple of notices, and now you're coming now. What, kind of what's been the holdup, I guess, on all of this?
We were talking to Pierre. Our first notice was, I believe, this spring. And we were talking to him about different ways that we could present this. And the, I guess it's our busy time right now. So when we received the notice in April, it really wasn't feasible for us to get a good plan together, and we wanted to make sure that it was professionally done. So at this time, all of the boulders have been moved back, and the employees are no longer parking there. We just never removed the gravel because that would be a good base structure for some of this installation. And so we reached out to Pierre to continue moving forward and try to get it done yet this season for him and would like to do something just a little bit different than regular grass. It's going to be basically artificial grass instead of something movable.
So if we were to give you permission, would you get this, you're saying you'd get this done?
Yeah, before the winter, we have the materials all ready to go. It's just we were looking for formal approval. And I guess I didn't really hear a firm response back from them right away, and they worked back and forth between planning and a couple other departments to try to get us pointed in the right direction. And that's why we've ended up here, per their request. So there's a little bit of delay there when we weren't getting back to them over the summer months, or trying to put together a plan and let him know that we were actively working on that. And then when I, when I put the questions back to them, I believe that was in August at some point, this is the first commission meeting that we were able to be at to present once we received the information of where to bring it.
Okay, thank you. Just for some history for the commission. In past years, we have let a couple homeowners do stuff like this on their curbs and stuff. And, you know, as long as it looks really nice and that they are fully aware of the fact that if for some reason we have to dig into that property, you know, we're not reimbursing them for doing that. That's, and they, best you could talk more about that, but I think, so, over the years, it's been okay, has it not? Maybe I'm wrong.
Mr. Simmons, I know we've had about one or two households that have done some, some work and more towards the back of the other right-of-way, not, not towards their first eight to 10 feet. We need a lot of area for, for snow storage or utilities, things like that. Certainly, I mean, this would look very nice. Some of the areas that Pierre wanted me to bring forward was in, being a landscaping business, this is starting to be a display area. That might be a slippery slope that might want to be aware of. Other businesses may want to start using the boulevard for display. So, I mean, basically, if you keep most of this back and they're aware of the issues, it's still, still public right-of-way. But we have, you are correct, we have had several homeowners who we allowed some work done in the back.
So are the pictures here, are they in compliance here? So with the way the boulevard is?
Those are not in compliance either, the pictures. Those boulevards, so those boulders have been, have been an issue with our plows. I know that our maintenance department has, has hit several of those plow, those boulders and moved them back, and that has been a part of some contention going back and forth.
And, Mr. Brenniger. City of West Fargo does have an ordinance on the books, so I'm going to call on Mr. Shockley, our legal counsel.
Yeah, West Fargo, thank you, Mr. President. City does have an ordinance on the books regarding not obstructing the city right-of-way and getting permission from the city. The one thing I would recommend is if the city commission allows it to go forward, that we would require the owner to enter into an agreement with the city. We have been doing that in the past where anybody who wants to encroach upon city property or city right-of-way is required to enter into an agreement. That way, if Chris and his crew or the city engineer put together a new project, we have the right to go rip that out. And so it's very clear that the city can come in, tear it out. We're not responsible for any accidents that might occur because of the construction in the boulevard, those sorts of issues. It's a standardized agreement, but I'd recommend that we would require the owner to do it. It gets recorded against the property, so if it's sold, a subsequent owner knows what's going on and that there's no right to maintain that in the right-of-way if the city so chooses to remove it.
Thank you, Mr. Shockley. Would there be any expense to the individual?
It's a standard agreement. There'd probably be, there's a small amount of time involved in it, staff time.
That would be at the request of whoever the requesting individual is, is to incur that cost? So that's all in the public, and everybody knows that. Jody?
I was just going to say, so this new design here, we're trying to be tender with that. We realized that this was not in compliance, but there was a little bit of a communication there originally when the building went in, that, because all of the surrounding areas around us, since there wasn't a sidewalk, we landscaped to the curb, and that was our error. And the city has sort of allowed us and looked the other way. That, because we dressed it up and we tried to maintain it, our intentions are not malicious in any way to make the property something that is. Like I said, we were looking to the planning to try to find out who, who we should get the proper approval from this time because we did have a little bit of an issue in this small space when the building was built in two, it was landscaped in 2012. And so since it was, I think that the boulders on the corner are really the only areas where there was a little bit of issue. So we are not proposing to put boulders right at the curb in this design, and we are proposing to keep everything nice and low-lying. It's mostly just a consideration of this is artificial turf versus regular lawn. And in order to border the turf to the curb, we just put a little bit of rock on the side, landscaping rock. So our, like I said, our intentions are to receive the proper channels this time to try to make sure that we're abiding by what you're allowing us to be able to do, so.
Thank you, Jody. Mr. Silbert, would you step to the podium, please? I'm more concerned about consistency throughout the system. Could you address this exception with regard to your comp plan and anything like that? I mean, this is very foreign to that, is it not?
To some degree, I think everybody's kind of getting it right. It's really an encroachment. It's city property. We need to maintain that city property for the use of the road. In regards to consistency, I'm probably most concerned with any federal-funded roads that we have. We have some issues if there's any encroachment in the right-of-way on those. So we need to be really clear that if we do approve something like this, it's a very unique circumstance. And our costs are great. I think even though John indicated those are sometimes small, I've seen them kind of balloon because back and forth with agreements. So I want to make sure that the applicant understands that this is really our property and they're looking to use it. If it's simply a matter of can we use this grass as opposed to this grass, it's a different thing. But if they're starting to use it as like display, they're really using our land for display. So I want to make sure they understand that they should have to pay the costs associated with that encroachment agreement. Signs, completely off limits, really, because the sign code is very clear and setbacks, et cetera. So I'd be careful that they don't put signs advertising their business in there to maintain consistency of our sign code. That's maybe a concern I have, so. Or structures for that matter. Structures and signs together are the same thing. I'd say those should be off limits.
Thank you, Mr. Silbert.
Thank you.
Are there any other additional questions?
I do, yes, sir. Actually, it's more of a comment, you know. I agree that you, you know, you'd have to move those boulders back for our plows, but you look at these pictures, and I know what these folks can do. It looks a hell of a lot better than dead grass and weeds. And that's mostly what we see around town, quite honestly, on our boulevards. We really do. And I know we have a spot. I mean, it's right down from you, the seat company. We allowed them to put in that whole patch of, whatever you want to call it. So this isn't a precedent by any means. We've done this in the past. You know, so, I mean, consistency, yes, but I think we still have to be a city that's flexible as well and to work with our businesses. And I think, quite honestly, if you can move those rocks, it'd look really nice.
I will point out the monument sign and the signage in the photos of the existing have been put only on our property. And that was something Tim was very clear about. And we have no issue with the expense being on us for any maintenance or any future removal if there's a city project that we need to remove the product. So that is definitely not an issue, and we are not trying to in any means encroach with signage or anything else with, with the post or the overhang at all. So we're trying to be very respectful in that manner.
Thank you, Mrs. Callis. Also, thank you for the historical perspective. Commissioner Simmons? Any additional questions, comments? It's the pleasure of the commission.
I'd make a motion to approve as long as you follow, you know, sign all the proper documents and follow everything that Pierre says.
Could you tell me who to follow up with about the encroachment agreement so that I do that?
Mr. Shockley? And any expense would be?
Any expense would be, and also, John knows what to put in there. But as far as if we have to come back in there, you have to realize right now, we're not going to ask. You know, there may be some pipe we have to get out, whatever. It's, it's all on you on that part. But at the same time, I do thank you, you know, for making it look so good.
I, I have a question.
Please.
Drainage, you know, I see the parking lot here, and then you got the artificial turf and the gravel. Is that going to cause any problems with heavy rainfalls, snowmelt, things like that? Meant to?
Well, I'm, I'm assuming, I mean, I, I don't see a grading plan with this, but I'm assuming that they're all great, their entire lot are great, some type of catch base to be hooked into our system. So I don't expect to see any type of issues of that.
Mr. Scott?
One concern I would have, I guess, is if this perpetuated itself, let's say, everybody went a nicer approach and put in artificial turf, it does have a different runoff value to it. So when we design a stormwater system for a development, it's based on the fact that, you know, there'll be a street that's X feet wide with gravel. you know, there'll be a street that's X feet wide with grass for 10, 15 feet on each side of it. That provides us a number to deal with in terms of collecting rainwater. It won't make a big difference, we do it one spot, but if we did it this entire sterling industrial neighborhood, we would dramatically increase the runoff in the right of way. So I don't have a specific concern with this particular project. I'm not sure what they're planning to do in terms of grading, but one solution to that would be incorporate some kind of retention based on they've changed from a turf situation to an impervious situation. There's a number that we can generate that is, you know, amount of runoff that they should have to accommodate on their site somewhere. That'd be the only concern I would have in terms of drainage.
Right now, it's just all gravel.
It is all gravel. The parking area is not intended to be concreted at this time. And all of the drainage per our initial site work, we were told to drain to the north and to the west. So that whole area drains away from the space. And we can certainly get some recommendation from more engineering or whoever, we would need to do that on your pointing. We can get a drainage recommendation so that we know where to swale it to or where to bring the water to. I guess my intention was to drain it all towards the north because that just connects to the ditch. So, and Tim also touched on the federally funded roads. He also indicated that to me. So the Seventh Avenue side is the side that is not shown here. This is the side road. We have no need for any encroachment or want for the ditch or on the Seventh Avenue side. This is on the side road on 10th Street, so...
I have a motion on the floor, but no second. Is there a second?
Thank you. One question. Commissioner Simmons, would that include that we are able to review the plans before they do the work, so we don't end up... If you want to be, yes. Yeah, I think that... You do that. Boulder, I mean, it looks much better than what's out there now. If you go out there, it looks pretty, even the ones with the grass, look pretty shabby. But I understand the concerns of the city engineer and public works too, so... So I agree with that, yes. So you'll have to come back to us one more time.
Would you like to see changed, so that I'm clear?
We just want to see, make sure we're not getting boulders in there and stuff like that. We can see where our plows, they can't see in the heavy snow where those boulders are, and they hit them, it chips our plows up and...
This is already there.
All right, but... Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sorry. You want to do some changing to this too, right? Or is this exactly what you want today?
That's what we want.
Well, this is what, exactly what you want?
Yeah, and the boulders are 12 feet back from the curb currently. We have no intention of putting them up to the curb as per what was done previously. That's the existing space kitty corner. That has nothing, very little to do with what we're asking for today.
Do you understand that, Mike? I'm a little confused, I'm sorry. I guess I am here.
I'm going to go back to Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would defer to Chris, but the boulders probably don't, probably don't want to have the boulders on the right of way, and the curb isn't the right of way. The right of way sits farther back than the curb, so you'd want to get...
It's 25 feet, the dash line that's in there. So if we need to not have them on that, I can get them stricken from the drawing.
The dash line. I know this isn't the subject matter tonight, but is it, do you have any affiliation with this business here or ownership? I mean, are those boulders still there? Can we get them away from the street? As a side order, I mean, I can see, again, I see our plows hitting them.
And we are working with those property owners. We'll have to get those moved back, we will. So, I mean, but right now, no, if they're back, you know, 12 feet or so, typically, we're about eight feet for snow storage is a rule of thumb, and the speed's up there, they're past the recovery area, so I don't think they're going to be a crash hazard or anything like that at 12 feet back, so those should be okay.
If I could, we have a motion on the floor, I do not have a second as a...
All seconded, as presented.
Moved and seconded for the approval of the plans as presented. That being said, because you asked the question, Mrs. Calliffe, as to who is your point of contact? You know, you visited with Pierre, Chris has had input here, and our city engineer, Mr. Scott, has too. Chris or Dustin, please advise me which of you two people will meet with her onsite with a tape measure to make sure that the setbacks for the rock and all of that is appropriate.
Mr. President, since Pierre is part of my department, I'll take that task.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And moved and seconded, that we approved the request as presented to us this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Excuse me?
Sorry, Mayor.
I'm going to interrupt the vote, and Commissioner Simmons has one more.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I just want to make sure that Commissioner Thorsted's amendment got into that vote. You still want to see the plans, or are you okay with that? Well, I want whomever, if it's Chris interacting, I want him to make sure he's fine with the plans before they do it, and then we end up with boulders where we don't want them.
My suggestion's okay with you, Mike?
Correct. And then you've already talked about having to after agreement with our attorney, so...
Commissioner Simmons, I feel if we get a final set of plans, we can take that to our development committee, which is, so Dust and I both sit on that end, Tim, and we can just take a quick review.
Okay, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure Commissioner Thorsted was satisfied. Yeah, thanks. Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Calliffe. Item number nine is to review the proposed engineered and loose fills as project cost for sewer, water, storm, street improvement, District Number 1321. John Yunus.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for taking the time. I'm John Yunus with Eagle Ridge Development, and we're the developer of the wild. As we've got further along in the design process with engineering and more engineering, it was brought up that in the far northwest corner of the development, the ground is lower than what the inlet elevations are proposed to be. So fill needs to be brought in in order to get residential lots to grade. And so in discussions with engineering, I requested that fill up to a certain height be engineered so that it didn't require over excavation for foundations and other things within the lot as the work was actually taking place. So that's what the request is, is to get that approval from you guys to put engineered fill from existing ground to a certain elevation and then loose material over the top of it. It's similar to what we do in other municipalities when we have lomer work that needs to be done.
Thank you, Mr. Yunus. Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to start with a little background. In the past, the city has had a, call it an unwritten policy, that we try to regulate how much fill is brought in privately into the private lots. Sometimes a developer will desire the lots be filled so that they're more marketable, but it's more of an aesthetic thing than a function aspect. But we did have a project last year in a different neighborhood where we ran into a functionality concern of if we don't bring in some fill onto the private lots, that not only will temporary drainage issues arise, but the fact that each property will spend a lot of money over digging and correcting a concern. So I view this as a similar situation that I would ask that the commission do allow for this fill, but with a caveat that we don't exceed anything beyond what is minimally needed for functionality from a drainage and a compaction standpoint.
Yep, I'd agree with that. One of the other things that I'd point out is that as a developer, we're willing to take on the responsibility of having the material tested, so that our geotech's comfortable with it. So it's not a cost that would fall into the project around the city, it'd be something that we would take on and oversee.
Thank you, Mr. Yunus. Mr. Scott, how do those elevations get arrived at with what you've just suggested, a minimal amount of fill coming in? So how is that determined? Is your office working with Mr. Yunus and their development as to what that fill amount would be?
Yes, sir. With the plat, there's a requirement to have a drainage plan, and that drainage plan will establish the elevations on each property corner, along with, which is, couples with the design of the road, the grade of the road. So along with the engineering of the road and the plat, we can determine what this elevation should be at, the minimum functionality elevation. I don't know what that is today, but I can have that information tomorrow.
And will rely on our engineering department to do that?
Yes.
So there's no misunderstandings here like what we dealt with a year ago on another development?
Correct.
So what is engineered fill?
So the difference between engineering fill, yep, good question, Commissioner Olson. Sorry.
I'm here to ask a question.
So I'm going to use the example that Mr. Yunus brought up. In Fargo, when they have to put in a new development that's in a floodplain, they have to fill it to a certain height, you know, elevate it. But the requirements to elevate it isn't simply to go in there and dump dirt. You have to compact it within so many lifts, and it has to be tested by a geotechnical engineer. The compaction effort itself is observed by a geotechnical engineer, and then they test it every so often. So that is what makes it engineered fill versus the pile of dirt that's sitting over by Costco, for example, is just simply fill. It was just fill there.
Okay. Dustin, one of the things I think that we both know, and you know very well, it's not so much what the engineers bring in, it's what the homeowner, once he purchases the property, and starts landscaping brings in. Is in any new development, you want to be the highest. So all of a sudden, you start here, next homeowner, and pretty soon.
Right.
Fortunately, that's, it happens everywhere, all over our city, and not a lot we can do about that, but...
I suppose the commission all clear as to what Mr. Yunus is going to be doing in conjunction with our engineering department? We're all good?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Yunus. So the proposed engineered and loose fills as project cost for sewer, water, storm, street improvements for District 1321, which would be borne by the developer? Are any additional questions? What is your pleasure?
That will be accepted.
And a motion made by Commissioner Olson, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jurdovic seconds it, been moved and seconded, engineered and loose fill for project cost of water, sewer, storm, street improvement, District Number 1321, with the caveats that our city engineer has detailed and the agreement that Mr. Yunus has agreed to. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 10, reviews the proposed roadway section for 11th Street West for Wild's 11 Edition. Mr. Yunus, again.
So 11th Street West has a wider right of way than other local roads within the development. We're typically 29 feet for a roadway section, and that allows for parking on one side. What we're proposing is 34 feet, and that would allow for parking on both sides. And this is similar to what's done widthwise in other municipalities as well.
Comments from Public Works or Engineer?
Well, I might bring planning into this one. We had a discussion here last week, the three departments, about this. And from a fundamental standpoint, we're not opposed to allowing parking both sides. You're going to start having a narrow right of way, I mean, excuse me, a traveled way for the two lanes of traffic in the middle, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, it's kind of a traffic calming issue. But if there isn't parking on the street, when you get out in here like to 15th Avenue East, where we received a lot of comments about, that's a wider roadway, but when they're not parking there, it turns to be more of a racetrack. So it's six one, half dozen to the other. It's very difficult to really say which way it's going. I mean, we can engineer in a lot of bump outs to try to constrict those areas, and like I said, philosophically, I think we're all okay with it. Wouldn't you say so, Tim? From the functional standpoint, we have to work through and make sure we can, we fully understand the impacts and make sure it functions as the way it's intended.
Restate the width of the street for me, please. Sir, Mr. Yunus?
So typically, it's 29 feet wide on a 62-foot right of way. This is a 70-foot right of way, and it'd be 34 feet wide.
Okay. Mr. Brungard?
Yes, sir.
Can you address snow removal when you have parking on both sides of the street with the dimensions that Mr. Yunus just shared with us?
Well, the snow removal, you know, we still get moved off, they'll split to each way, and just wherever there's a parked car parked, it'll be what we call a snowbird there, and they'll have to come back later and clean that side of the street. Now saying that's a big issue, we deal with that throughout the entire town, at least on one side of the street. I don't think from a snow removal practice is such a bad deal. I think it's probably a benefit to have additional parking. I think it's probably a benefit to potentially reduce the speeds in the areas, but if there isn't enough parking out there, it may be a hindrance to increase the speeds. I'll try to talk more in a circle.
Mr. Silber?
I just had one comment. I think this is a great idea. It's although part of something that we need to look at comprehensively, and it's like where you place your driveways, all that kind of stuff that they start to lose control of after the development is built, and they start sending lots out there. So we're going to try to work with them to make sure that they communicate it well to the builders that are purchasing these lots and where they place their driveways. Because if you have more area for parking, but they don't place their driveways correctly, and you don't have space to park, you're really just building a wider road, you know? And I think that's what we ended up with on that kind of what felt like an Audubon near the Gateway West development, and we ended up putting some traffic calming in there. There's just so many driveways, nobody really ever parked on the side of the road, so it was just a really wide road. So we're going to try to make sure we have them communicate that well to the builders.
Use our municipal codes and/or your comprehensive plan. Do we have full authority to recommend to the developers where they place the driveways?
We have authority to recommend it than anything, but having the authority to actually enforce where they locate their driveways, we don't have that yet.
That was truly my question. Did you enforce it?
Yeah, we can't. And that's something that as we rebuild our development code, we want to place in there so that if you have a wider road, that it actually makes sense that you're parking on both sides. What ends up happening a lot of times is you get streetlights in, you get those mailboxes that are collective mailboxes, and then a person puts the driveway on one side, and then the person next door wants their house flipped at the last minute, so they got a big driveway. And also, sometimes people have 26-foot wide driveways in a 40-foot lot, so there's really no spot to park there. So we need to kind of comprehensively look at this. I hope that we can get there on this project, but unfortunately, we don't have a mechanism right now in our building permit to require that. So that's something that we got to get done.
Thank you, Mr. Silber. Any other questions, or Tim?
No, I have one.
Mr. Yunus?
Yunus, what is your mail delivery system going to be out there?
It'll be cluster boxes, just like the rest of the development. And to speak to Tim's point, we'll work with planning and engineering and making sure that we locate those things. The other thing I, we do is work with Cass County Electric on the placement of where they've got each of the pedestals for each of the homes, because a lot of times that'll dictate what side the builder will put the driveway on. So with just an ounce of prevention, we can kind of get rid of a lot of those issues and steer the development the way that Tim's talking about.
And what was the thinking of the road going in that wide to begin with? Do you know what was the...
Well, it is, it's going to act as more of a, I don't want to say it's a collector, but it's almost going to act like a collector. I mean, it's going to continue from 52nd Avenue all the way down to Horace. And part of the reason that I was pushing to have traffic or parking on both sides was that I don't want it to act like a collector where traffic speeds up. I want to slow it down because it's in the middle of a neighborhood, and families live out there and have kids playing, so...
Looking at the map of that road, at least it's not a straight shot like 15th. It does meander, so that will help, especially if we get some cars parked along it, so they're not just zipping down there as a racetrack, so...
Yeah, exactly. And then that's why we added a lot of the curve linear nature to the road, was to try to slow people down. So this is just another method to do that within the neighborhood.
Any other questions, Mr. Yunus? Well, we thank you for your willingness to work with engineering and with Public Works and planning and zoning. That's greatly appreciated, and we'll be looking forward to that. It is a pleasure of the commission.
Make motion to approve the roadway design.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted. Is there a second? Oh, second. I can make a question. Commissioner Olson, been moved and seconded for the proposed roadway section for eleven Street West for the Wilds eleventh addition. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Yunus, thank you. Next order of business is item number eleven. Mrs. Fisk will talk to us about the enterprise fund budget review.
Good evening, President, Commissioners. Chris will be coming up to give you a presentation. I just kind of wanted to give you a slight overview because I said enterprise funds. We have three enterprise funds. We have water, sewer, and sanitation. And at this time, the water fund that you have in your preliminary budget that I gave you, there are no changes. We don't anticipate rate changes for the two thousand nineteen year. For the sewer fund, we plan on bringing forward a calculated sewer rate later in two thousand nineteen when we know more of the facts on connectivity and we can actually rate out our costs, because we're gonna have to adjust how we charge residents and commercial industrial. Right now, we have a ten dollar flat amount that's charged initially to residents and that's for the first ten thousand gallons and then they pay a dollar for each thousand after and it's based on their water usage. And we also base commercial industrial on their water usage, but they have a different rate. So, with that being said, as we move forward and we have to charge a greater amount, a greater rate to cover the costs of transporting it over to Fargo, we have to come up with a new mechanism of charging people. We can't just use their water meter rate during the summer months because a lot of people water and that causes issues now. Some people get upset with the fact that we don't separate the two. So, Chris has come up with some ideas and we've thrown some around and we plan on just getting some information together and as the months go on, we'll keep you informed and get your opinion on what you feel is the final correct outcome for the rate for the sewer. So, we'll be working on that. And lastly, sanitation. Chris is gonna give you some information. Sanitation, we've not raised the rate in quite some time. In fact, Chris, I was looking up for Chris and we barely raised the rate since two thousand four. Yep, in two thousand four, it was ten dollars and now we're at thirteen. So, it's been eight years with a three dollar increase and in that time, we've created a lot of deficiencies, which has helped us with the rate, but we've also added recycling, which right now is costing the city over five dollars per individual and we're picking up that cost and have been the whole time. So, with that being said, we are proposing rate increases for sanitation. We're proposing, Chris will be proposing a rate increase for residential, for commercial, apartment, and end roll-off. So, I will let Chris explain that to you and if you have any questions, I'll be available.
Thank you, Tina.
Mr. President and Commissioners, I handed out the packet earlier, it's a copy of my slideshow that I prepared here. Sanitation restructuring, you know, there's several different goals and ideals that come along with this. It's supposed to be a self-supporting venture that generates all software revenues. By state law, we're supposed to charge it sub enough to make sure that we cover all our operating expenses. No, current apartment rate structures isn't meeting our current demands. We've been, since we added our recycling program, we've been supplementing that by about five hundred thousand dollars a year to cover all recycling costs and our other operating costs. As I just said, our reserve funds are being used. Our current model is certainly is not sustainable as we continue to move forward. Our objectives as we set things is a revenue requirement. Like I said before, we need to make sure we meet our needs for all our expenses. We wanna make sure things are equitable. Now, we should reflect a fair portion of cost to each service customer by population. Make sure we're not overcharging commercial to cover costs by residential, for example. I'll make sure that everybody who generates that service gets charged for their rate and not something extra. Conservation is something that we don't really do in this area. The idea behind a conservation is charging a rate to encourage people to do more recycling, put more or less out. Our current structure right now includes us to put about everything out on the curb and we'll pick it up. Only real exception is probably tires and appliances. We charge to pick up appliances when it's not, when it's not cleanup week. Otherwise, they're fifteen dollars apiece. Rates is built stability. We should pick a rate that's gonna be able to withstand us for two to four years is the ideal, not really the ten years that we've been experiencing before. We need to keep current with the rates so they're probably smaller in increments and not such a large jump to start over with. And we also should pick rates that aren't confusing. Make sure people can really understand what the rates are telling us. What I did to start doing all this work to figure out our cost of services residential I have up here right now is through our work management program, we track every worker's hours and equipment they use when they perform their work. So, in two thousand seventeen, I could come out here and tell you that for the ten thousand one hundred eighty-seven residential accounts, it took us total labor of two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. That's including all their benefits. And then, the equipment cost is three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. That's the number of hours that equipment's actually used to put on the street to gather garbage and litter. To calculate the equipment cost, we use the FEMA chargeable rate. That's a very easily verifiable rate that everyone has access to and that rate includes no fuel, depreciation, maintenance, insurance, whatever maybe take to operate that piece of equipment. So, I included with that, the tipping fees is the cost that we get from the city Fargo to dump our garbage in their landfill. Our recycling cost, which our effective rate is about five nineteen per household. It's actually what we get charged is higher, but we receive a rebate for waste management using our transfer station, about twelve dollars per ton that they bring in, that they pay us to use our facilities. There's also some operational offset, material offset that we get back, but that, those dollars are disappearing. At the peak, we're getting about seven thousand dollars a month back from waste management for selling our commodities, our recyclables. But now, since a lot of the trade wars and China is no longer accepting a lot of the different recyclables, that bottom's dropped out of that market. We're actually, I think last month, we paid about four thousand dollars for that, a loss of four thousand dollars to have those materials separated and sold those commodities. So, as we include the administrative costs for all the overhead for the equipment, I'm excuse me, for the buildings, the heat, the uniforms, the vaccines, whatever it takes to operate this department as administrative cost, we have a total cost. I divide that by the number of units and we get a average per year and then I took a four-year average, because I wanna say we wanna make sure we set a rate that's for two to four years. I picked four years, so that came out to be about twenty dollars and eight cents for single-family residential. I wanted to detail on this first one, I won't go that far in every different one that we go into. Just trying to say that we're truly looking at true cost of service to provide these services. I have one for dumpster services. Currently, right now, under our current rate structure, all apartment buildings are charged a residential rate. So, if you have a hundred-plus unit, you're paying for one hundred single-family rates. They may not produce them, same as a single-family rate, but we serve them as a commercial property. We bring in, pick up all their waste in a dumpster and I sat with Commissioner Thorsted and we thought that we should treat them as a commercial property and not as a residential property. So, I included those costs along with our residential poles and something that's really interesting, if you take a look at the number of dumpsters per week that my crews dump and take a look, it's one thousand two hundred and forty-one they did in two thousand seventeen. That's for every week, they pick up twelve hundred dumpsters. That's quite a daunting number. Then, we have the labor, equipment, all that, the tipping fees. I have, in the bottom chart, you'll see the actual cost, the dumpster size is in the first column. Then, we have the cost of service. Each dumpster costs the same amount and service, a four-yard dumpster costs the same amount as it takes to service an eight-yard dumpster. So, that's a fixed cost of eight dollars and seventy-nine cents per. Then, I calculated the cost for the municipal solid waste goes to the dump and then we come up with a cost per dumpster.
Your calculation is based on fifteen minutes?
Roughly about fifteen.
Each dumpster, regardless if it's an eight yard or a one yard, it takes about the same amount of time and the same piece of equipment?
Exactly. So, size of the dumpster is not a determining factor on the cost. The cost differentials is the cost of the waste inside to dump it and that's the direct cost we get from the city Fargo. So, those are the actual costs that we have. The last column is proposed rate. I rounded to the nearest five dollars just to make it less confusing. Here's the proposed dumpster rates as compared to city of Fargo, Grand Forks and a private waste hauler, waste management. The red numbers show a cheaper rate, so Fargo's cheaper in every single size that we have. Grand Forks are very competitive with Grand Forks on the same cost. Waste management is higher as being private, I expect them to be. The very first, second column, you see our current rates. They were quite a bit cheaper for the smaller dumpsters and the larger dumpsters seem to be very comparable to our proposed rate. So, they were getting a break in the past. Roll-off service, this is an interesting service that we started the service and started charging sixty-five dollars per pole. These are the large construction dumpsters, every construction house has. A lot of the large businesses have these large roll-offs. Places like Costco have a large compactor that we use a roll-off truck. We also do all our compost pickups at the parks. Those are also roll-off trucks. So, we were charged sixty-five dollars per pole. This is on-call service. They give us a call, say my dumpster's full, come dump it and we go and go dump it. Well, doing this whole calculus that we did, we found that it's cost us roughly a hundred and sixty dollars to perform that service, which is quite a bit more expensive than several of the private firms. As you see, Ken's sanitation is a hundred and twenty. We do not currently have enough roll-off dumpsters to provide service to everyone in our city, so we allow private firms come in and take up some of that slack. I would recommend in this one is that we switch to the higher rate, a hundred and sixty dollars. We provide incredible customer service to those customers we have, since it is that on-call service. And I say we just give those customers an option, they wanna maintain our customer service with a hundred and sixty dollars pole, or they wanna find a private hauler to provide that service.
Can I ask you, Chris?
Yes.
Quick question. Why don't we just get out of that business and turn over the private sector? Why, if we're losing money, like, why?
That was our first blush on it. This is, we'll just continue that system, but we're still gonna be keeping those, some of that equipment around to maintain our compost. So, we say we're still having that system and we have such good customer service to our customers. If they do like to stay with us, we'll keep those customers and we have to have them. But, we wanna give them, since it's such a large jump in cost, saying that if you wanna go elsewhere, we understand.
Right, I get that.
So, that's really, we keep the equipment for the composting, we use it haul snow in the winter, so we still have the equipment. It just matters if we're gonna have, you know, we have what, two FTEs doing that job right now, one and a half, two FTEs. So, if we do shrink that service, we may have to address where the FTEs go, being absorb them internally for increased number of accounts, or if it needs to be eliminated, something we take a look in the future.
But, at one sixty, are we making any money?
That is our cost of service.
That's a cost.
That's our cost of service. And it's really, we're not really looking at making money. That's the great thing about being municipality. We wanna make sure that we get this amount and we have enough money to have reserves for any contingencies for, you know, unexpected cost increases, a truck blows up, throws a transmission, we need a new roof, whatever those things may be.
Do you have that built into the one fifty-nine?
We, you'll see at the end here where we're out there, that does generate that number. I think the FEMA dollars that you guessed ahead of the schedule, you read ahead, that I think the FEMA equipment dollars may be a little overvalued for our area and those costs. We don't realize all those costs, so we have some excess contingencies at the end.
Okay.
Right here, we're taking a look at annual collection versus expense. You see, we have each of our different sorts of services that we provide, the apartments, the commercial, the roll-offs, our inert landfill, and our residential service. In two thousand eighteen, those are, I projected the cost off our number of hours used in two thousand seventeen. I have a full year of two thousand seventeen data. Excuse me. So, I projected this data for two thousand eighteen and I saw that our total collection is to be about four point four million dollars. Down in the next two lines, I have the two thousand eighteen budget, which is three point three million dollars and our depreciation of our equipment. That's a straight line appreciation over fifteen years is roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, our annual expense is the three point five million dollars and we had a contingency just using those numbers with the proposed rates to be roughly nine hundred thousand dollars. So, that's where that extra is in there. And personally, I feel that the nine hundred thousand dollars is probably a little too high, has too much as a government. I don't think we need to collect excess funds in that manner. So, in the next sheet, I took a, I did some calculations and you have that one column all by itself called residential rate. I asked myself, what happens if we reduce the residential rate to seventeen fifty instead of the twenty dollars and eight cents? Well, that went through and recalculated everything from the different spreadsheets and it kicked down the contingency for two thousand nineteen to be about six hundred thousand dollars and it's declining from there on to two thousand twenty-two. That's roughly about a ten percent contingency over this four-year period. So, that's where we're at right there. So, there is a contingency built in, I think it's realized from the different FEMA rates, but it's in there. And I just wanna make sure that we can compare that against the budget amount that we have, because I know we're certainly able to pick up all of our work this year with, and we included, the recycling's included in that budget. So, we can meet our budget expectations, have that extra, I know is feasible and works.
At the present time, your equipment is projected to work for you for fifteen years? A roll-off truck or a garbage truck, is that correct?
Correct. We put it on a fifteen-year rotation.
And a new garbage truck is three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand?
Three hundred and fifty thousand. I'll verify that.
A roll-off truck is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar ticket?
Correct. Correct. This is the last chart that I just wanna renew what our dumpster, proposed dumpster rate fees are to what the existing are.
May I have a look, Jim?
Our residential rate, I'm recommending the seventeen fifty for residential rate. Back to apartments, I wanna put in a six dollar per unit basic fee. I apologize, I didn't mention that on that first chart. The basic fee is all these extras that everyone gets from our service, you know, the composting, the recycling, the inert landfill, the transfer station they have access to, the household hazardous waste that they can dump off, the cleanup week. All these are the extras. And being a resident in an apartment building, you still have access to all those services and they're not really built into the commercial rate, so I'm just proposing that we have a basic meter charge as a better thing, just to make sure that we can cover that cost. I apologize for not including that in that slide. And then, the roll-off weighed a hundred and sixty dollars per pole. And then, I just threw in a pie chart to see where most are major costs and most are roughly about fifty, six percent is still from our residential service. That's things in a nutbag. I, ready for your questions?
Can you go back to like your fourth slide, third or fourth slide?
Sure.
Cost of service for residential, just adding. So, that's our cost there for that first column for two thousand seventeen, two point three million.
That is what it cost us, correct?
What did we actually collect in ease? We were losing?
I, well, we weren't. I know Tina's looking up here, she's being Johnny on the spot. I can tell you that we certainly, since we started our recycling service about four years ago, we've been absorbing that cost completely. So, we had that thirteen dollar cost per, and then, we started at five thirty-five per unit and that's increased by, I believe, three percent per year for four years, at least a minimum, without compounding is twelve percent. So, we're about five seventy on that cost. So, if you have those two together, we're over eighteen dollars. So, I can tell you that we did not bring in the money that we spent.
We're not breaking even.
We're not breaking even. We're going backwards. We've been spending reserves every year to make up that difference. And luckily, we're been a very conservative and prudent city and we've actually saved those reserves and it's a great deal that we can... And we've actually saved those reserves and it's a great deal that we can, that we can do that. But that balance is dropping quite a bit and we just can't sustain continuing.
But Chris, I know that when we started this program, the, uh, we were going to save money. I mean, when you say we're going backwards, I agree, but I don't think we're going as back as much as.
Oh, certainly not.
It interprets that we're going back is what I'm saying because we got, we get fees, you know, coming in landfill and stuff for all that too. And then we get these other fees. So I don't think that's in that number, is it?
The, 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 uh, the fees, uh, they, they are all, all been accounted for. You see on the last page here, let me find that. I have a line item. I didn't, I did not give you a, a slide for just the, the inert landfill itself. But I do have it. I did count it here that, that we bring in about sixty-two thousand dollars in our inert landfill. Is, is the type of revenues we brought in three years. Commissioner Simmons brought up that, that some of the things we've done in the past to, to continue to, to improve the efficiency of our department. We switched our style of residential collection. You refer, we used to always have the rear-load trucks. We have two guys on the truck. They get out and they throw it in. And since that time, we switched to, to the automatic side loads. And we still pick up everything they put on that curb. But the amount of, you know, if one out of ten houses has something extra, we have a truck that picks that up. But when we made that switch, we were able to sell three trucks. And that, that's the equipment sales we made. And we also eliminated three FTEs that we, that we shed by, by, uh, by people just leaving and going to other, on their jobs. So we did not have to, to eliminate anybody. But they did shed three FTEs.
So I have, I have a question I'm afraid to ask, but you mentioned that the new trucks on our rotation are about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Do we have that built in anywhere or do we, is that, it is?
Yep. If you saw, it's on the, let me go to the previous slide here.
Okay, so it's.
That's the double check on the equipment depreciation. That's a straight line depreciation. That dollars, those dollar amounts are also built in the equipment chargeback for the cost of service from the FEMA charge is, is depreciation. I just want to use that as a check to make sure that, that we just weren't really wonky on our numbers. To make sure that they're driving and making sense. Before all our rate analysis before this, this is the first time we actually use true cost of labor and equipment. We've never able to track that before until we worked our work management software. So we can cost out about anything we do and tell you true cost of service.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Thorsted.
Just a couple of comments. I'd like to, Chris mentioned he and I and Tina sat down and talked this a couple of times. I just want to compliment Chris on great work as far as digging into the numbers. You know, I like numbers and he's got more numbers than I even like here. Just a little context, I think Commissioner Simmons mentioned that when we started recycling, at the time we had some reserves. And we said, okay, sure, we'll cover it the first year, get everyone off the ground and go forward. We never changed that. So at the time, I, I believe the projection was we'd have a net cost of about three fifty, in the three dollars somewhere. Now the markets changed, the volumes have changed. And like he's mentioned, the, the China and them aren't buying the amounts they used to. And our cost is now over that five dollar in some range. So just in that in itself lends to whatever our residential rate will be. And we're actually be less than that. And it's still a premium service. Nobody in the metro has the kind of service that we, we provide. And recycling is still a very good thing. We want to do it and continue to do it. If we didn't do it, we'd have to have additional trucks, additional people picking them up and paying additional, uh, uh, fees to Fargo to put in the landfill and filling up landfills. So, you know, we can't look at it strictly as a economic decision. That's, that's the right thing to do. And I think obviously we'll continue that. And as, as Chris mentioned, I think he's going to clean up some of the, you know, we're putting dumpsters at apartments and we're putting them at a commercial place. And as far as service, it's the same service. So we're trying to get some of these schedules to where there's a good balance. I will say as our dumpster rates are going up significantly, some of the businesses need to look if they can go to a larger dumpster and reduce pickup times. Like, I don't know if you alluded that, but there's some businesses that are picked up several times a week. And that reduces a lot of costs for them. If there's an opportunity for them to have less pickups or, you know, get a larger dumpster, there are ways for them to even at a higher rate come out and, and a bitter situation. So.
Right.
But I will, uh, again compliment Chris. He did a lot of work on this and there was a lot of good discussion. And I think, uh, uh, I, I think he's come up with a good suggestion here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thorsted. I couldn't agree more. Uh, Tina, do you have something for?
I just wanted to reiterate, um, definitely the experience with some of our new podcast directors.
No.
No.
But, um, like I alluded to, and I wish it was part of the speech, I didn't want to interrupt him too bad. But in two thousand and four, we were at ten dollars for residential. And then in two thousand and ten, or?
Eleven.
To eleven dollars. And now we're at, and now we're at thirteen dollars. So we've, in, since two thousand and four, we've only gone up three dollars. And look at the service we provide. That proves the efficiencies that were made, the sacrifices that were made. But if you can only stay that so long, and even if you were to adjust it to two thousand and nineteen, you should be looking at from two thousand and four to two thousand and nineteen, only going up a pole of seven dollars and fifty cents for cus, for residential customers. It's way should be ten and coming up situation. So, um, I just think it's impressive what they've been able to do with, and since we have that top two thousand and thirty.
The data is, is, speaks for itself and it's well done, Chris.
Thank you.
When I was elected to the commission, I came in with the idea that what we need to do is dig deep and figure out where we can save money. The city has always prided itself and the commission on trying to do what's best for, to our taxpayers. And they have done that, uh, to the tenth degree. But as I've continued to dig into this, this is one of the requests that I've made of Tina, is to know what our enterprise funds do. What, what is our profit and loss statement, if you will, by department? And I have to say to you, ladies and gentlemen, we're not done digging into this. Because there are other departments, there are everything from the court system or what the new cost of what our, our prosecution costs versus what the fees are for, uh, you know, uh, fines and the like, uh, planning and zoning for what our fees are for permits and things like this. So I think it's a responsibility of the five of us sitting up here that we have to, uh, continue to be diligent, responsible to our taxpayers and be aware of where all of those different funds are at and, uh, and with real relationship to what the revenues are, uh, generated and what it costs us. That same analysis has been ongoing with Mrs. Fisk and her team of, uh, department heads and certainly the previous commission when it came to the engineering department. So all I would like to say tonight is I'm not going to ask for an actionable item tonight, Chris, out of respect to Eric and Brad who've had limited amount of time of this and, and Mark. Uh, Mr. Thorsted has been briefed on this because he carries a portfolio, as I have. So with all due respect for the great work that you've done in preparing this for us, I want to have Eric and Mark and Brad to have the opportunity to sit down to make sure that you understand every, all these elements. Because again, we're going to have to be answerable to the public and to the taxpayers, uh, when we roll this out. Make no mistake, there is a change forthcoming. We have to do that. It's for the best, uh, uh, for our city. And hopefully that we will present this to the taxpayers that they'll be understanding that due to the course of the number of years and the, and the different dates that Tina has mentioned, that we haven't, uh, um, moved this along as they have. That is not a criticism of the commission that sat here before us. That is their efforts to do whatever they can to keep costs down to the taxpayers. And we had some reserve funds which we could draw upon. So just to make that extremely clear to the public and to everybody in the room, this is, this is two thousand and eighteen and we're working for the future there. But what was done in the past was the responsible thing by that commission and what they thought was best for the taxpayers. But we will be continuing to dig into department by department or enterprise fund as the enterprise fund goes. I think, uh, again, that is our responsibility as commissioners. And, uh, and I have been pushing for that since, uh, what was the date? April nineteenth? So I'm done. So Chris, we thank you very much for the expertise and the, uh, information that you've provided. But with all due respect, I don't care to have an actionable item this evening. I, I really want to respect the, the time that the other commissioners can put into this to study it and visit with you about it.
I'm available. I have all West Fed sheets. Anytime you want to be, please let me know.
Thank you, Chris. Item number twelve will be our city administrators' report. Mrs. Fisk.
Good evening again, President and Commissioners. I have a few items on here. Um, I wanted to start out with what Commission, what Commission President Dardis sent out earlier today. And a huge thank you to Melissa, Ellen, Public Works, Police Department, Fire Department and all the staff, Economic Development, everybody that made West Fargo a huge, huge success. Along with all of you riding on the float and throwing candy. I had someone say, oh, the city's coming. They have the best candy. I was like, I was reading that on Facebook because I had to miss it. But everything was phenomenal. The pictures I've seen, the plaza, everything. I mean, it, it makes you proud to, to work and live in West Fargo. So I just, I wanted to make sure that I said that again in public, as you had mentioned it before as well. My next item was I have a request of you. Um, in the past, our North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund agent, we've never, ever put that out there for anybody else. We've carried, had the same carrier forever. Um, and not that that's a bad thing. They've done an amazing job. But I've had a request from another agent to ask that the city put that up on a rotation. Now with the North Dakota Insurance Reserve Fund, no matter what agent you go to, you pay the exact same rate. Um, because there's only one, one bill. It's just that agent carries your work for you. So I want you to, you don't have to make a decision tonight. It's just something to think about. Um, what I would ask you to consider is to think about, do you want to, um, have an advertise for qualified agents that are interested in carrying the reserve fund for the City of West Fargo to submit their name? And then what we would end up doing is putting it on a rotational basis. And my suggestion would be probably a four to five year because it takes a long time to just get up and running. Um, and if it's something you don't want to do, that, that's fine as well. But I want to give you all the opportunity, um, to think about it. I know I mentioned it to Mark a while back and then I just kind of let it sit. And then I mentioned it again today and to Bernie and said that I was just going to bring it up for you guys to think about. I'm all around and if you have questions, let me know. Um, and we can proceed from there. Any comments right now?
I'm not opposed to that at all. The only thing I wouldn't, and I don't know how we can do this, John, but I would, I would definitely want it to be a hometown insurance company. I don't want to go out of state or I don't want to go out of the city.
You can't. It has to be a local agent.
A local, local insurance company.
And, and that's one of our issues that was brought to me by the person, sorry to interrupt you, Mark. Um, the person that came to me said, you know, we're a West Fargo agent and we would love to be West Fargo's agent. And right now, that's not necessarily always the case. So it would be at your directive. Do you want to just take West Fargo agents? Do you want to take metro agents? How do you want to do that? Um, there's a lot of good agents out there and as long as they're qualified and they're able to get the reserve fund, um, to get the reserve fund bid from them. Like I said, dollar for dollar, it's going to be the same. Um, and then it's up to them to prove themselves from that point forward. So I appreciate that.
And did you say on a five-year rotation?
Well, um, originally I thought three and then I was thinking about it. It takes a long time to get up and running. And then we've got to rebid and you've got to start like this time frame of year to get another one if you're going to switch over. So I'm thinking four or five. I would prefer a five-year, but if you think four is long enough, that's fine as well.
You, you made the comment that, you know, dollar for dollar is the same, but what's the burden on city staff to make that?
There is no burden on city staff because the agent picks up all the information and the agent makes the transfer and the agent is responsible to get everything transferred and caught up. So there's no burden on staff. I've done this before in other locations, um, and that's why I know that is how that works.
I know we talked about doing this, uh, quite a few years ago. We, we talked about it and then it kind of, I never really went anywhere, but it was more of a reason to be fair to everybody. You know, to all the companies within our city, I feel. But it's more to be fair because again, you're right. It's exactly the same. There's no, it's the same fund. There's no difference in payments. There's no difference in liability coverage. It's just a matter of whether this agent does it or this agent does it. That's all it is.
Do you have an idea of how many agents in the metro area would be qualified for this? Because not all insurance agents are qualified to carry this fund.
Well, it's, it's a matter of qualification, a matter of interest. Not all insurance agents are even interested in handling the municipal reserve fund accounts. Um, I don't have any idea. And that's one of the questions I was asking, um, for you to think about. Do you want to just start with West Fargo agents? Or do you want to do metro wide? Um, it's taxpayer dollars that we're spending. So that's totally your call. I mean, and like I said, it's dollar for dollar the same.
Of all things are equal, John, could we say we want a West Fargo agent?
When we looked into this a few years back, there were only two or three agents that really wanted anything to do with it anyway. And at that time, there was only two, quite honestly, that, and I don't know who they.
That was before my time. I have no idea.
Yeah, there was only like two that, because it, I don't think there's a lot of money for the agent, you know, a lot of commission or whatever. Because it's for, like I said, it's a pretty, it's standard. For us, the advantage is which agent is going to do a better job for us. That's kind of what it's all about. So.
And that's one of the things I would do if I got the names and I would do some research. I talk to them, find out what do you plan to do for us that's better, that's different? How do you plan on carrying this out? That type of thing.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, so pop in, see Tina or email her and, uh, express your wishes, please.
And then I'll just bring it, bring it up for some type of decision at the next meeting so that I can, if you choose to do that, that I can start making the arrangements and put the paper notification on and so forth. Um, the next thing I have is I wanted to remind those of you that signed up for the chamber annual meeting. It is Wednesday, the nineteenth at noon. And that is at the Holiday Inn, I believe. Yes. Courtney says yes. Okay. And then, um, this Thursday, for those of you that have been invited so far, Pierre is having his very first EOC Activation Exercise Workshop. And it's just to bring some of us together to start getting some initial plans going. And then more of you, of you will get pulled in and you'll enjoy it thoroughly. It will be delightful. Trust me. That'll be this Thursday. Um, and don't forget Friday is the Main Street Summit. And Kelly and Courtney have been putting the agenda together along with Matt. I don't know if Matt wants to give you more information on that after I'm done talking. But, um, there's an agenda going out, invitations and so forth. So it'll be a busy day. After that, uh, one more reminder, final budget hearing will be next meeting, October first. Um, I will present the final budget along with any proposed changes that I have received or have been requested at that time and give a recommendation on where to go from there. And lastly almost is, um, the week of the twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth, I will be gone on vacation. But I will have my laptop and my work phone. So I generally tend to work in the mornings and check my phone all afternoon. Anyway, so if you need me, call, email, whatever, I'll be responsive. So I was just to let you know. Last thing, Larry's going to give you a little quick discussion on land trust that we had a meeting on the other day. So.
Tina, can I ask a question before you? Uh, excuse me, on the Main Street event on Friday, are we expected as commissioners to be there? When, when do you want us to be there? All day? Part of the day? Just want to get, get kind of some expectation.
You're up, Matt. He'll tell you.
Uh, we really need people to come at five AM to help and share. Uh, it's going to start, uh, the, the governor's office has requested that. Governor's Office has requested that we start with a bus tour. That pickup time is 10:00 AM. I'd like as many of you to attend all, the entire summit, just so you can hear the dialogue and, you know, when I say something wrong, correct me, that sort of thing. When the bus tour is done, we're going to go back to the VFW. We're going to have a roundtable discussion. That's with the Governor's Staff and Office and some other interested parties. We'd like you involved in that. And then finally, there's a proclamation that our mayor is going to, I think produce is the right description, on the patio with a fifteen-minute, you know, question and answer session for the media, whoever shows up. And then finally, a working lunch, and then we're out of there. So the time footprint, you know, nine forty-five to two, I will say, the governor tends to run long. So I've mentally prepared everybody for that. And he admits it himself. So take those times and just, you know, that's your general direction. And I'm available. If you have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email.
I didn't know if you wanted, just there for the roundtable or for the tour?
As much as you can make it, I realize you all have, you know, lives and jobs. And so whatever you can attend would be great. You certainly don't have to be at all of it. And some of it will be review, especially the bus tour. We're just going to hit, you know, kind of high points of the community. They've asked, you know, what are the major issues in the community? How does it fit into the Main Street Initiative? And so we'll be driving around, talking about some of the things that we're working on, and then sort of dig into the Main Street Initiative downtown when we get there.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Wowe, thank you.
Yes, Your Honor, Members of the Commission, the subject that I'm bringing up is workforce housing. It's been an important issue in the metro area for a number of years. And as a result of that, the FM Foundation has been working on it. They have charged the Impact Investment Committee that they have to help address the issues in workforce housing. One of the areas or solutions that they're looking at is a community land trust. And with that, they believe that they can influence the cost of land utilized for constructing or repurposing property for affordable workforce housing. Community land trust would be one effective tool, though it is not the end-all solution to workforce housing shortages that we have. The FM Foundation is in the process of incorporating, and their corporation would include both Cass and Clay County at this time, taking more of a regional perspective to the issue. Their goal is to reach out to local jurisdictions and educate them, inform them on to what community land trust is all about. And any, any interest and comments and so on by various jurisdictions be funneled back to the FM Foundation in their deliberations and in formulating the type of policy and direction for workforce housing. We had a meeting with the FM Foundation on September eleventh with city staff and President Dardis to introduce the subject, and started unveiling that to the various communities. With that, again, it's only informational at this point, and we're seeking any input that the commission might have about community land trusts and about the community's interest in collaborating with the FM Foundation and their efforts going forward. I did lay down kind of an informational sheet on what community land trusts are. You can use that for informational purposes. And if you have any questions, feel free to get ahold of myself or Bernie or Tina. Be open for any questions that you might have.
A question. This is a, yeah, news to me, so I'll have to study up on it. But, and you don't have to answer these now, Larry, but I was just wondering, I was looking at the structure they've got here. You own the house, you don't own the land. From a lender's perspective, I always heard they don't like things like condos and stuff, where they don't have, you know, an ownership interest in both. There's, you know, a separation of that ownership. I was just wondering what the lender's perspective is on that. Again, you don't have to answer now, but I think that'd be a question. And then, and they talk about, okay, again, you don't own the land, but you have to lease it, you pay a lease, and then you also have to pay what, more or less, an HOA fee, because they pay an annual fee to the CLP for their support. And again, that's probably come from a lender's perspective as to what, you know, how much they allow on that, and then how the factors like specials factor into that. I think we need to look at any concept we can to try to make it so people can afford to get a home. So I think that's certainly, it's a good thing to look at and explore. I'm just wondering how some of those things play into something like this, and whether they've been able to resolve that in other jurisdictions?
Yeah, certainly. Going forward, good questions. Again, it's not a panacea to the workforce housing issue. It's one tool in a big toolbox of trying to address that. There are communities that have had a lot of success in community land trusts. There are quite a number of them around the country. More close by, Grand Forks has had one for a number of years. And Bismarck, I believe, is working on one. Minot is working on one. Duluth has a very large, successful land trust. In this area, I think it would be more educating the lending institutions, becoming more familiarized with what it all is. Typically, in the other jurisdictions, they don't see it as, as a competition type of thing, because they, basically, the corporation, land trust area is looking at the fixed land costs or managing those land costs. So you don't have a real large inflationary factor on it. But the rest is through a typical mortgage.
Okay. And I'll email you these questions. This thing came to my mind right away, and I'll, just so you have, and maybe you can provide more insight down the road.
They're in a very preliminary stage of this. They didn't have all of the answers. April Walker, who's on our Planning Commission, former city engineer from Fargo, is on the FM Foundation, and she understands this because, as Larry does, because of some of the surrounding communities that have this. There's a, they have a great deal of these in Minneapolis. And as Larry said, Duluth, Grand Forks has got about ten years under their belt with this. So the people that build the house on the land, when they go to sell the house, they're selling the value of the house, not the land, because the foundation owns the land. So that expense is always taken on out of it, that that's part of the idea or the premise as to why the house will be more affordable. The land is never purchased. It's owned by the trust. But your questions with regard to lending are excellent ones, because I've heard that over the years, you know, the same questions, Mike. So as we get that, we'll share that with all of you.
And the, I agree, if you can strip some of the cost out again, I don't know what percentage of the property value is land, you know, around here, maybe it's not as, you know, expensive seeing some of the metro, big metros, land is a significant portion. But, you know, I have that as a question. That's maybe something to get back to. Again, conceptually, I think it's, we've got to look at everything we can, but it'd be nice to know.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wowe. Tina, do you have any correspondence for us? Melissa, would you please stand? For those that don't know her in the room, this is Melissa Richard. And her and her team were the leaders, if we will, of WestFest. She had some great volunteers. Many of them are in this room. And I just want to say, after experiencing WestFest from 7:00 AM, because you'd never ask Melissa where she wants you when you're a commissioner, because she'll tell you. I was at the beginning of the kids' run at 7:00 AM on Saturday morning, and then the 5K start and the 10K start. And, you know, the activities throughout the day, you and your volunteer team, and obviously Chief Yonkey and the Police Department, Chief Fuller and the Fire Department. Chris, your team and Public Works were amazing. Matt, for all of the roles that you played, outstanding. And I know that Larry Lubin was critical to all of that. But the interesting part is, we saw many of our, Dustin was there, excuse me, Dustin, and his son. That's the part I loved, is that many of these same folks that we mentioned, their children were standing with them, next to them, in a West Fargo fluorescent vest, participating and learning the whole understanding of community and working hard for us. Commissioner Thorstedt graciously provided a pickup for the commission to ride in. There will be one change in that next year, is that he sure as hell not going to drive again.
A little fast.
Commissioner Jurdabek, Commissioner Olson, and Commissioner Dardis had you all go home and change clothes after running behind that damn, so, and that or we have to put us further back in line, so he can't drive as fast.
Had to keep up with the Rolls Royce in front of you.
I know. He was keeping up with a Rolls Royce. Yeah, enough stuff. No, Mike, thank you for your generosity and Matt, and the signings that you had on your vehicle was great. But as a newly-elected official, community officer, I was so proud of everything that went down, right down to the dance, you know, at the Plaza was spectacular, the music was great. And for those that didn't participate in there, you know, the staff we had there, Chief Yonkey had six police officers there, and plus the chief was there, and plus Assistant Chief Boyer was there, Chief Fuller, you had, gosh, you must have had about ten firefighters there, at least, and got a chance to visit with them. The explorers from the Police Department, they were terrific young people. Got to meet all of those and shake their hand and thank them. And then, visiting with the VFW people, how pleased they were for the day. You know, obviously, they were swamped, they were busy, which is what every retail business wants. The big screen, the televising, the Bison Football Game, it was spectacular. And it made, it should make us all very, very proud that those entities that have invested in that public space, how well it was utilized, and, you know, the expectations are only going to grow. So Melissa, again, to you and all your volunteers and your efforts and your team, and thank you so very much. Great job. Is there anything else for the good of the order? With that, Mr. Marshall, may I see you for one minute? We stand adjourned. Make a motion to adjourn. Oh, Michael. Is your second? I took executive privilege. We stand adjourned. Thank you, Mark.